It's Monday, April fourth, or excuse me, it's Monday, April fifteenth, six twenty-five PM, and this is a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes of the Licensing Board for March eighteenth, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime, and we, I will second that motion because Alderman Butchlick is excused absent tonight, so we do still have a quorum of our board, it's just me and you. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and there's no opposed. We'll move on to a recommendation on an operator's license. Chief, deering.
Good evening, council. You know, it's a fairly reluctant time when we come up in front recommending a denial, but unfortunately, tonight is one of those times. I remind you that a operator's license in the City of West Bend is dependent on the applicant being able to hold that position of responsibility regarding customers purchasing alcoholic beverages, control of the employing license premise, and conduct of the people within that establishment. Also, not a small thing, a license itself, a license itself does not, is not particular to a premise. It's a license in the city will allow that person to sell alcohol at any licensed premise, so it's a good thing to keep in mind. Mr. James Hughes has applied. We went back and did a background check and unfortunately found some very concerning pattern of behavior involving both alcohol and failure to cooperate with law enforcement, two things that are very vital for us to have when enforcing our alcohol laws in the City of West Bend. First, and I, again, I've said this before, I hate digging up everyone's dirt on it, so I'll give you a quick, brief summary if you have some specific questions, we can go in. But in May of 2017, Mr. Hughes was involved in a single-vehicle crash, refused a failed field sobriety tests, refused a blood draw, search warrant was obtained, his blood alcohol concentration was above the legal limit, and he was arrested for OWI, convicted later in August of 2017. In April of 2019, during a traffic stop, Mr. Hughes provided a fake name, said he did not have ID on him, turned out he had ID on him, used the fake name to avoid several warrants that were out for his arrest. He was arrested for obstructing, bail jumping, and operating after revocation. Found guilty of the obstructing and bail jumping in September of 20. Charges of operating after revocation were dismissed but read in. November of 2019, another obstructing officer in North Fond du Lac, after a single-car accident on a snowy road, operator fled on foot, vehicle was impounded, vehicle, the owner and driver was later determined to be Mr. Hughes. Didn't cooperate with the investigation, but following was arrested again for obstructing, bail jumping, and operating after revocation. Convicted in September of 20. January of 20, resisting off, I'm sorry, obstructing officer and two-times bail jumping, again, parking lot car stop, driver fled on foot. One of the deputies was familiar with the vehicle and knew Mr. Hughes to be the primary driver. He had several warrants for his arrest, revoked driver's license in two open criminal cases at the time. They never did locate the driver. A phone call came in reporting an emergency involving an infant trapped in a Chevy Tahoe. They couldn't locate the Chevy Tahoe, but traced back the phone number to Mr. Hughes' phone number, I believe it was an effort to distract the officers from locating him. On March twenty-fourth of 2022, Mr. Hughes was arrested for his second offense, operating while intoxicated, also had a revoked driver's license and ignition interlock device violation. He was convicted of those in March of 23. And finally, on November second of 2023, in West Bend, vehicle tempted to elude an officer, driver fled on foot, passenger in the vehicle identified the driver as Mr. Hughes. He denied driving in the investigation, but surveillance video was uncovered that showed him in the car, driving away from a business in the area. He was arrested and issued a citation for prowling, which he was convicted on in January of 24. I remind you that we only utilize cases that have convictions when doing our background review, so there may be some other things out there pending. But based on the history of his OWI offenses, and more importantly for me, the uncooperativeness with law enforcement, the obstruction, I believe it would be very highly unlikely for him to be able to detect and enforce the over-serving of individuals, and ensure the safety of all patrons or citizens in a licensed establishment. I am recommending that you deny his application for license.
Thank you, chief. I'll move to deny.
Second move to deny.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? I appreciate the extensive background, and it's a, it's a, it's a privilege to be able to get one of these licenses, that takes big responsibility, and appreciate the work you did there. All in favor for denial, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, chief. We'll move on to a successor agent at SBG Apple North Four, and this is known as Applebee's in town.
Motion to approve.
All second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Another successor of agent, pick and save number four-three-zero, Ultra Mart Foods. All motion to approve.
Second motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item is an extension of premise for HHJ Associates, which is Joker's Five Bar and Grill. All motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and the Licensing Board is adjourned.
I'll call the Board of Public Works to order. Alderman Butchlick is excused tonight, and he asked if I could run the meeting for him. First item on the agenda is the Board of Public Works' regular meeting minutes from April first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, award contract twenty-four dash zero-three, Butternut Street, Main to Ada, and Maple Wine Street, Ada to Sylvan Reconstruction. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. As you mentioned, this item is our proposal to award this contract to reconstruct Butternut Street and Maple Wine Street. We have five bids that we received on April fifth, and they are listed in your memo. The engineer cost estimate prior to bidding was about $1.5 million, and Advanced Construction is the apparent low bidder, with a bid, a total bid of $1,130,000, sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents for both the reconstruction of Maple Wine and Butternut. Advanced Construction is a company that has done work under several contracts with the city, so we find them capable of doing this reconstruction job, and therefore, we recommend that this contract be awarded to them for the amount listed in their bid, and we also recommend a contingency of $61,937.35, which is about 5.48% of the total bid, for a total allocation not to exceed $1,192,000. As we have noted this year with, from prior contracts, we see the bids coming well under our estimates, and this is partly due to cost of materials that have dropped down from, from last year. That's the explanation for, for the lower cost.
Thank you, Max. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number three is award contract twenty-four dash zero-two. This is Hawthorne Drive Reconstruction, Seventh to Fifth Avenue. Max?
Thank you again. This is for another road reconstruction contract on Hawthorne Drive. It will include sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer facilities, and replacing the road pavement, curb and gutter, and sidewalk. We received seven bids on April fifth for this contract, and Advanced Construction was again, the low bidder. Our cost estimate prior to bidding was $996,935 without contingency, and the lower bid is Again, based on work previously done under contract with the city, we recommend that awarding this contract to Advanced Construction at the bid price listed, and also allocate a contingency fund of $43,861.30, which is 5.49% of the total bid, for a total allocation not to exceed $842,800.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Max? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And finally, we have approval of Storm Water Management Practices Maintenance Agreement, W seven dash sixteen, Amendment Three.
Thank you again. So this item is one that we see on a regular basis every time we approve a storm water management permit. Along comes with that, an agreement with the property owner to ensure that they will properly maintain those facilities that are supposed to manage the storm water on the property. So this is our typical agreement. This one is for a dental office at the northeast corner of Eighteenth Avenue and Corporate Center Drive, and we recommend approval of this agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max, and we have no other business for Board of Public Works, and we'll close the meeting. Bear with me a moment. Now I call to order the Finance Committee meeting, and the first item on the agenda is the minutes for April first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any corrections? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation regarding the pre-sale report for $4,560,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series two-zero-two-four-A.
Good evening, everybody. John Cameron with Ellers. I'll give a brief overview of the pre-sale report that you have in your packet, just explaining the details of the financing, as well as just the timeline for proceeding. So as it was noted, what is on the agenda tonight is seeking authorization to move forward with a parameters sale for not to exceed $4,560,000 of general obligation promissory notes. This would be Series two thousand and twenty-four-A, really financing two different types of projects. Number one is your two thousand and twenty-four general capital projects, and those projects will be repaid over a ten-year period of time, and then projects related to TID Tax Increment District Number Sixteen, specifically for Sand Drive, and that debt will be paid with the revenues of Tax Increment District Number Sixteen over a fifteen-year period of time. This debt is a, considered a general obligation of the city, which means it counts towards your total general obligation debt capacity, which is limited to not more than 5% of the city's total equalized value. After the issuance of these notes, the city will be at approximately 22% of its limit, which is very healthy, with residual capacity a little over $172 million. As I said, the term of the notes is being issued for 15 years. Interest on the notes will start April first, 2025, and run out through 2039, I'm sorry, principal will start 2025, run out through 2039. Interest will also start April one of 2025. There'll be a call feature on this debt, allowing the city to either prepay the debt partially or in whole, or to refinance it for better terms, and that would be any date on or after April first, 2032. In terms of the method of sale, what is being recommended here is a competitive sale through the open market, and done through what's called a parameters resolution, which is what you have on the agenda this evening, and really, that allows the city the flexibility to conduct the sale of the notes on a non-city council meeting night, and that's predominantly because, as we look at the market over the next couple of months, into May and to June, there are a lot of sales that are upcoming, so it allows us to kind of pivot and put the sale on a night. In this case, what we're looking for is May sixteenth, which is a Thursday, on a sale, sale day where we know there's not a lot of other competition in the marketplace, and that, you know, typically would yield the, the best sale results for the city. Along with that, in terms of just some of the highlights of the, the parameters resolution, really what a, a parameters resolution does again is allows the, the sale to occur on a non-city council meeting night, provided that certain parameters are met on the day of sale. So as we take bids, which usually are sometime between nine and eleven o'clock in the morning on the day of sale, the parameters would be a not-to-exceed issuance size of $4,560,000 with a, a maximum bid at 109% of that, allowing for an underwriter to submit a premium bid, doesn't affect the overall repayment of the debt, the par amount is still the same, but it allows the city to potentially downsize and use money to put into the debt service fund to help fund the first couple of years of interest expenses. A minimum bid of not to exceed 98.85%, a maximum true interest cost, which is what the bids are evaluated on, or a tick of 5%. Interest rates are certainly lower than that right now, but it gives us again, some flexibility in case there's market movement between now and the day of sale, as well as maturity adjustments not to exceed $100,000 per maturity in terms of moving money between maturities if need be, to again maximize the benefit to the city. Also, as part of this, we'll be going through a rating process with Moody's, so sometime between now and May, really probably around the first week of May or last week of April, the rating call will happen with Moody's. Currently, the city is rated at AA three level with, with Moody's. From a schedule standpoint, the sale, as I said, is, looked to be on May sixteenth, with the official statement and rating to be available right around the end of May first part, or end of April first part of May. The estimated closing date, which would be the date that funds would be available, would be right around June fifth, so that would be the date that the city would have money available for project expenses. A few of the highlights from the analysis in the pre-sale report, and then happy to answer any questions. The sizing, estimated sizing of the notes is shown on Table Two in the pre-sale report, and again, on the day of sale, that will be finalized. So the underwriters on the day of sale are bidding really on two things. They're bidding on the overall price of the notes, including their underwriter's discount, which is their fee for purchasing the debt and holding it until they sell it off in the secondary market, and then they're also bidding on the interest rate per maturity, and that's what gets evaluated to determine who the winning underwriter is. So it's a not-to-exceed resolution, and more than likely, the, the par amount will come down as we tighten things up with the actual bid results in May. The estimated principal and interest payments are shown on Table Three of the analysis. The levy portion of the, the debt, so for the regular capital projects for the city, that is, as I said, amortized over a ten-year period of time, starting in 2025. The tax increment district number fifteen portion, interest payments started in 2025, with principal starting in 2027, again, really kind of built around the planned increment within this district, and running out through 2039. The final thing that I'll, final two things I'll point out, in terms of the estimated tax impact for the portion of the debt related to the capital improvement projects, that's actually hitting the property tax levy. When you look at a comparison between where your current debt levy is, and then the new debt coming on for a property valued at $350,000, the estimated impact for taking on this new debt is $20 a year, in terms of the, the impact on the property tax bill. And then finally, just the last page has a one-year trend in municipal bond rates. Really, the high watermark over the last year happened right around Thanksgiving time, topped out at about a little over 4%, about 4.2%, and really, the low watermark interest rates dropped rather rapidly between Thanksgiving and really the end of January, and have gradually started ticking back up. Right now, the one-year average is around 3.6%. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John?
Just one question, John. You had, you had made a, more of a passing comment that relative to the general obligation debt capacity limit of 5% that the city has of its equalized valuation, that we're in a, a very favorable position. How does that compare to other like-sized cities, communities in the area?
Sure. A lot, most municipalities will have some sort of internal, you know, desire, control policy, which caps them at about 75% of their debt limit. It's not uncommon to see municipalities around 50%, 45, 50%. Smaller municipalities that might be doing more heavy economic development-type projects, you know, certainly could push that 75% limit, but you know, being at, you know, a little over 20% of your limit, you're in a very healthy position compared to a lot of your peers.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So we've had the pre-sale report, now we have the resolution to authorize the issuance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, accept funds from the Washington County Municipal Radio Grant Program. Chief.
Again, in 2022, Washington County earmarked half a million dollars for a program, a grant program, through their Public Safety Committee, to help fund additional radio purchases, so when a department would add an additional vehicle, additional employee, to help fund the purchase of those radios. In 2023, we purchased a, we're leasing a Chevy pickup for our CSO, that downtown CSO we've discussed many times in front of this board, and would like to submit for, submitted for that grant through the county to pay for the mobile radio in that squad. It's $7,300. In 2023, we requested it, and we're told no setup, no process had been implemented or set up, and we didn't have a means to access that money. I'll note Sheriff Schulteis was very straightforward, and has continued to remind the committee that we made that request in 2023. I thank the sheriff for that. In 2024, just recently, they, after getting several other requests from other jurisdictions, implemented a process, and we went before them last month, requested the process, and we're to the next stage before they'll award, we have to have a resolution from the council accepting that $7,300. So ask that you accept that money from the county's earmarked half-a-million-dollar fund to pay for this radio for our community service office.
Okay, thank you, chief. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Okay, thank you, Brad. Any questions for the chief? All those in favor, oh, I beg your pardon, go ahead, Mark, yes.
Yeah, chief, the, the radios, are these squad-mounted or personal, or both?
No, it's for the squad radio that's in her vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have award quote twenty-four dash zero-one, Real Estate Services for HSIP Two, Safety Improvement at Three Intersections Along State Trunk Highway Thirty-three. Max?
Thank you again. So back in 2022, the city and the state of Wisconsin entered, entered into a state municipal agreement to improve three intersections along Washington Street at Eighteenth Avenue, Seventh Avenue slash Main Street, and at River Road. As part of this process, the design was done, and now we are in the phase where we need to do land and landright acquisition to execute the project. So we published a request for proposals for those land acquisition services, and we received two proposals on April fifth, which are listed in the memo, and the Highland Group is the lowest bidder on this proposal, and they have a bid of $58,628.25. I separated the title reports in the, the listing of their proposal, because it's possible we would not need these. We already have title reports from our designer, so we may not have to pay that extra money for those efforts. Based on our review of the proposals, we recommend award of the contract to the Highland Group in the amount listed in their proposal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And finally, a resolution accepting donations to the fire department. Chief?
Good evening. I'm here tonight to, for your consideration of a resolution to accept several donations from generous citizens to go towards our smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector programs. A $500 donation from Mary Jors, a $50 donation from John and Joyce Heisdorf, a $100 donation from Roman and Iona Geren, and a $25 donation from Gene Nalk Stoffel. Again, all those donations will be used for our smoke detector carbon monoxide programs, and we're very thankful for that support for an important program.
Thank you, chief. I'll take a motion. We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. A motion was from Alderman Sparts. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. No other business before the Finance Committee. We are adjourned.
Thank you again. It is April fifteenth, six fifty-two PM, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State Statute. I'll ask our clerk to confirm this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We recognize a quorum of our council tonight, with Alderman Butchlick excused absent tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our Common Council regular meeting minutes from April first.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first discussion item tonight is, is a discussion on the implementation of the Downtown Master Plan, and I can kick off this discussion tonight, as we've had several members of our private sector group in front of this council over the past month and a half, and we kind of foreshadowed a memorandum of understanding from Mr. Ziegler, who was here a few meetings ago, and I, I told you I'd be coming to the council asking for a one-time contribution of $100,000. That's, that's not a match of the private sector's contribution. They're contributing in total close to $500,000, which includes a consultant who put together the Downtown Master Plan, the consultant put together the Downtown Streetscape Plan, and then this private sector group is contributing several hundred thousand dollars towards purchasing of pots and planting materials. Part of the MOU will state that the city is, is going to be responsible for maintaining and planting and watering of those plants once they're installed. The reason it's not in front of you tonight is because we're still kind of working out some details on that watering aspect of it. And I know Alderman Allen has got a report tonight from the bid boards meeting a few weeks ago. The bid board has typically, not typically, traditionally, has had close to, close to or right at $30,000 in their budget for downtown landscaping and maintenance, and so our hope is, is that the bid board at their next meeting will take action in support of- will take action in support of this downtown plan to contribute $50,000 towards a watering contract with Scotts Landscaping. That's an estimate. It could be, could be less, it could be more. As you know, watering is very weather-dependent. If there's a streak of two weeks of rain, there'll be no watering downtown, and we won't be charged for that watering. Scotts will charge based on the amount of time that they put into actually watering. It's not a flat contract of $50,000. And so, I talked to two of the private sector group leaders this morning. They are a little bit disappointed that we don't have action in front of us tonight, but I did try to assure them that we are doing everything we can to get all of our ducks in a row, to make sure that we are well-prepared to support this project. I believe that we can get there, but as I reiterated to them, it's just going to take a little bit more time, and hopefully, in the first couple of days of May, when the bid board meets again, we'll have more clarity on that. So, that's kind of my comments. Are there any questions on where we're at? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, I don't know, I personally think that what this private group is putting into this project is way, way above and beyond what we would ask of the citizens. And I hope that if there's some need for the city to contribute on a yearly basis to that watering, I hope that the current and future council considers doing that. Or hiring, hiring more help for Mike and getting into the watering business ourself, you know, I mean, one way or another, it just seems like we should be involved in this. So, just my opinion.
Yep. I truly believe this will be an attraction, or downtown is already attracting a lot of people, especially now that the weather's changing. Downtown is beautiful, the River Walk. This will make it, in my opinion, spectacular. People will talk about downtown West Bend and the flowers and, you know, how pretty it is. And so, I agree with you, and we're, again, still just trying to figure out how to put all the pieces together. This is a significant project and will take manpower and money. And so, we've already talked about if a, if a tree, you know, dies, that we do have a tree budget, a street tree budget where we can replace trees downtown, things like that. So, I appreciate your comments.
For sure. It seems like we can fix roads and water plants at the same time.
Any more comments?
Mayor, I appreciate your approach to this in finding ways to find alignment between a number of different groups, the citizens group, the city, this council, as well as the bid. Because I think it takes balance when you look at a project like this and you look at something over the long term, and ensuring that, that not just they are engaged, that not just we are engaged, but also that the bid is engaged, because we are doing this, in large part, to continue to enhance downtown where they, where they operate their businesses. And I think that we need to ensure that they too are aligned in what we do moving forward for the continued beautification of downtown West Bend. So, I appreciate you taking the time to take those necessary steps and be prudent in the way that we're approaching this, as opposed to just jumping into a MOU and then trying to figure it out after the fact. So, I appreciate that.
Appreciate those comments.
Is this being laid out to the bid board as $50,000 estimate, one year? I mean, I know that when you landscape, a lot of times, you know, you need watering for that first year. We hoping that money falls off at that point, and, you know, from year two on, is it going to be, hopefully, nature takes its course? Or is this going to be something that needs to proceed, you know, every year afterwards?
And we had Scott from Scotts Landscaping in attendance at the bid board meeting. He's worked with Mike for years, and that's his best estimate for any given year. Honestly, until the plants are in place and the pots are there, nobody really knows what the cost will be. Obviously, we all hope for that to be less, but it's certainly something that will be reoccurring. So I think that the base of your question was, is it something that's going to go away in time?
Probably not.
Absolutely not.
Any other comments? Before we leave this item, I want to reiterate something I said at our last meeting when some of these leaders were here, that I truly believe that this public-private partnership is something that we should be extremely excited about and quite frankly, very grateful for. This is the type of group, these members who represent families, generations of families, they represent businesses in town, you saw some of them who have been here in the past. These are the types of people that I think other communities would die to have on their side and wanting to collaborate with the city. And so, I stand by that statement. These are great people that are just looking to really help beautify our downtown, and they want us to be a part of it. I'm certainly thankful and grateful for them. Again, I reiterated, it's just going to take a little bit more time. So. Okay. Thank you for that. My computer locked while I was talking, so give me just a second. Okay. We're going to move on to presentations tonight. Our first is an Arbor Day proclamation, and I will look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Model, and the second, Alderman Allen. I'll read our proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day is observed worldwide celebrating the role of trees in our lives. Very timely as we're talking about trees in downtown West Bend. Trees are among Wisconsin's most beautiful natural resources. The demands on our environment and resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values. And whereas West Bend has been recognized as a Tree City USA City for 39 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation for its tree planting ways, care of the urban forest, and high-quality forestry program. Now therefore, I, Joel Onger, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the City of West Bend, and I urge all citizens to support Arbor Day, the efforts to plant and protect our trees and woodlands for the well-being of present and future generations, and support our city's urban forestry program. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our next presentation, which is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Burquist and Alderman Allen, thank you for the second. Are any of our telecommunicators here with us tonight?
Yes, they are.
I would like to invite you to please come up and stand in front of the room.
Come on, you guys.
If you wouldn't mind, just stand right here so we can get you on camera. Just what you wanted tonight. I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services. And whereas, by monitoring police and fire activities by radio and providing them with vital information, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters, ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the point of contact for all city departments after normal business hours and ensure citizens have access to vital municipal services 24 hours a day. And whereas, the work of these unforeseen first responders is invaluable and should be applauded and held in the highest regard all throughout the year. For without their commitment, devotion, and hard work, countless number of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Now therefore, I, Joel Onger, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through the 20th, 2024, this week, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the men and women whose service and dedication keep our community and citizens safe.
Bet you didn't know you were going to have to stand up there when you came tonight. Glad though. So, thank you. We won't take up too much of your time. Appreciate, you know, once a year, we formally thank them, but I think it's important that we remember that they are the voice of professionalism in a time when people are calling in crisis. They're the voice of compassion when people are calling in times of fear. They're the voice of reassurance when they're scared, when they need help. They're our frontline supervisors. I know I've talked to you about this in the past, but they're the first person that decides what resource goes. They're the first person that listens to our team. Lately, we've been talking about dispatch a lot, and I will keep our comments positive tonight because it's about a celebration of our team, and the team members that couldn't be here are either working now or preparing to work. But we've been talking about dispatch as if it's an entity. We've been talking about it as if it's a section of a business. We've been talking about a dispatch as if it's a line item in a budget, and it's not. It's these people. It's Kim Wendleborn. It's Beth McCarthy. It's Deon Hall. It's Ann Marie Hale. It's Heather Corning. It's Kaylee Riggi. It's Amy McCartney. It's Imogen Miller. And it's Ashley Wilson. It's our team. These are our friends. It's our family. They are as vital to our ability to protect and serve our community as every member of our department, as our patrol officers, as our clerical staff, as our firefighters, as our command staff. They are West Bend PD, and I ask all of you, as the conversations maybe continue, that we keep that in mind. It's not a budget item. It's our team members. So, I'm very proud to be partners with all of you. Thank you.
I'll be brief. I was not prepared. But I will echo everything that Chief Daring has said. We absolutely cannot express our appreciation for these team members enough. Again, as the chief said, they are literally the first, first responder to pick up the phone at a time of emergency, and they have to deal with that emergency from the outset. So, they're part of our team. They're sitting in a command car when our battalion chiefs are responding to an incident. So, we want to thank them during this week for their service.
I just want to thank both chiefs for making that point.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you very much.
If any of our aldermen or anybody else in our city hall, city staff would like to do a sit-down shift with one of these first responders, reach out to chief, either one of the chiefs, and they can help set that up. What the work that they do is truly amazing, and I'm very grateful for all of them. So if you'd like to take up that time, sometime to sit down and watch firsthand, just reach out to one of the chiefs. All right. Our next presentation is an update on our five-year road construction plan. Max?
Hello again. Thank you. So, we prepared a two-page document to look at. On the first page is the engineering department section of the city's five-year capital project plan as currently published on the website with our 2024 budget. And on the second page is an update to that, to that document, because the city is looking at including projects that will address replacement of lead water lateral lines. And on the first page, you can see, we have some highlights. The first section that's highlighted in gold is identifying projects which are funded with carried-over funds from previous year. The ones highlighted in blue identify projects that would receive ALPA funding. And the projects highlighted in pink would be the projects that the city is looking at postponing to future years in order to be able to slide in the projects with the water laterals. And the projects in yellow are being slid off earlier because a portion of these projects include water laterals as well. So, the ALPA funds that would come to these projects with water laterals have to be expanded by the end of 2026. That's why we're shifting things around. And so, on the second page, which is pretty much a copy of the first page with those updates, with shifting projects in the new year that they were signed, adding those projects at the bottom, highlighted in green, to be built in '25, so next year. And also, we have an update with the projects that we're doing this year. We updated the numbers that we had as anticipated cost estimate to the actual allocations derived from the bids that we were awarded this year. So, I will take any questions if you need any clarification on those two pages.
Max, could you just share that you sent out a revised document?
Yes. So, just before this meeting, I sent a revised document because the original document that's published with, with the agenda, the formula on top for the years 2024 and 2025, on page two, did not take into account the cost estimate that was for the projects in green, which are the projects that we're adding for the laterals. So, we corrected that mistake. And then, I added the notes on the right side of the pages to clarify what the highlights meant and everything that I just explained now.
Go ahead.
So, just one question or point of clarification as I look at it. We had originally budgeted for $5.7 million of pavement maintenance programs in 2024. We're now looking at spending $4.16 million in 2024. And whether, Max, you can answer this, or whether, Jay, you can answer this, I'm not sure. But where is that difference, I guess, being made up? Do we have this extra money that we could be spending? Is it a change in the amount of marrow that we're borrowing for these types of projects? Maybe you could just enlighten me as to where that significant difference in budget versus actual looks like for 2024?
Okay. So, this year, we have, like I explained earlier tonight in previous council meetings, we have seen our bids come well under cost estimate, and thank God, we, the city will be able to save a lot of money this year. So, I don't know if the borrowing has been done yet for these projects, but is it?
Yeah, we just authorized it with the last action that John was here.
Okay.
And they did lower it based on the cost estimates that you have in place.
Okay. So, then the borrowing will reflect the adjustments that we have here. And so, we will borrow what we need based on those final numbers.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Allen?
Max, does this, we tend to do about the same amount every year. Does that run rate tie to how much we can do based on our staff? In other words, if we wanted to spend twice as much every year on roads, would we need to add staff to do that? Or do we have extra capacity to prosecute more road repairs and rebuilds?
So, if we were to do more projects, basically, we hire out for design and contract administration. However, we do have a lot of staff time involved in the rounds of reviews with reviewing the plans, reviewing the contract specification, bidding, et cetera. And then, we end up having weekly progress meetings for every road reconstruction. So, we would have to invest more staff time. If we're doing double reconstruction, probably double staff time will have to be involved with that increase.
Thank you, Max.
Yes?
Max, I've been, I had intended on asking you about this, and I forgot. Now I see it on here, and I remembered. So, River Road, I lost it again. Yeah, River Road, Gatewood to Whitewater. In my mind's eye, River Road isn't in bad shape. What am I missing for that?
So, this is one of the projects that are... So this is one of the projects that are, how do you say this? We're having water utility issues in that area, and those utilities need to be repaired. And as you know, we work in collaboration with the utilities. So if they have in their plan to go and repair the road, usually sewer utility takes care of addressing their utilities there as well. And instead of cutting up the road and have two patches following those two trenches, we go and reconstruct the road as well. So we take care of storms where, if needed, and then we end up with a fully reconstructed road. So that's why this road is there. It's because it was in the utilities' five-year plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions? Alderman Allen.
On that road, for instance, if you could get away with milling overlay, you wouldn't have to rebuild all the curbs and gutters and sidewalks?
Yes.
You'd do the minimum that's required.
Yes. If we had good curb, then we leave it in place, and then we would come and just replace the pavement. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Guess I have one. Max, if we've seen some savings in the difference between the estimate and what the bids are coming in, do we anticipate any kind of savings as far as when the projects are completed? And obviously, when you do something, you have either cost overruns or maybe come under budget. Is there any consideration for the fact that we might incur some savings which might allow us to do some other projects?
Yes. Typically, our projects come within budget. We always come to the board and council and ask for allocation of the bid and a contingency because construction is full of surprises, and you may have to spend a little more than you anticipated. As far as I know, all our projects came within that budget of the road bid plus contingency. So every year for every project, we do have some savings, depending on the project, depending on how it went. So it will vary. That, those funds that are not expanded remain in the accounts, and I'll carry it over for the following year, and then we take that into account when we plan for borrowing for the following year.
Okay. So in the case of Badger Lane, the fact that it's being delayed now, there isn't any opportunity for, say, savings, money from savings that may be allowing that project to come in at the time that it was planned? So we're really looking at their project being delayed until it falls in the next plan, correct?
Sure. So because we're borrowing only for the amounts that we awarded, if we had borrowed the entire $5.7 million already, then we would have that money in an account, and we could have maybe, even though we don't have the design, try to include other work. But since we're borrowing for the work that we need, we don't have that option unless we can borrow more next year.
Thank you.
Sure.
So with that being stated, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's a balance, right, between how much we borrow and how much we want to spend on roads. And if we borrow more, we take on additional costs of doing so, but we could get more roads done in a more expedited time period. I realize that's really, really oversimplifying it, but I think that's something that, as we look at this as a council, is something that we consider, given the state of our roads in the city of West Bend and looking for ways that we can expedite the maintenance and the upkeep that's necessary. There's, you know, one tool to do that is increase our borrowing to be able to do
There's an example in this budget. You can see what I highlighted in light gold. You can see that it says carryover, carryover, carryover. This is like over a few years where the bids came out, and we had that money, and then we know we need to address this. And that section of road in the Willoughby Estates subdivision, we didn't have any utility work. So it's pretty much pulverize and repave. So then we can, it's simple to design, and then we can add this section, these sections of roads, which were not in the previous five-year plan, but now because we have that excellent of funds, then we can fund this project this year.
Alderman Allen.
Yeah. Max, what would be the, would there be any advantage to having a couple of years' worth of design work in your pocket so you could bid it right now? In other words, do the plans go stale in 30 days, or 90 days, or a year, or two years? Or could you be, you know, could you start and, you know, target having two, or three, or four years of future projects already designed?
I guess that's something that the city could consider. We have done this for some projects where it made sense. We did, now it's going to escape me, of course, by Sylvan Way, Laurel Drive, thank you, Laurel Drive North and Laurel Drive South. So it was designed as one project. So we had the 30%, 60% plans, and then we concentrated on finishing the plans for Phase One that first year, and then we build it. And then the year that we were building Phase One, we finished the plans for Phase Two. So we have done that in projects where it makes sense to, because we have a certain budget every year. We can only spend a certain amount. So sometimes we have to split those projects like that and, like you said, have the design done ahead of time. We'll probably do the same thing for Kilaborn because there are some cost savings in surveying the entire road once, instead of sending out the survey crew twice or three times. So we do employ this method when it makes sense, when we have larger projects.
So what is the lifetime of a plan, then?
I would say, I would say three years. It depends on what's happening in the area. If there are not big changes, big developments, or things that will, changes that will not impact the plans that were created two years ago, or three years ago. It will depend on the activity in the area, but I would say probably three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions? This is just a presentation tonight. There's no action on this. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our consent agenda with items four through 14 listed on your agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Model. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do have an item that requires a public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing related to a proposed industrial development revenue bond financing for Gen X Holdings LLC project. If there is anybody from the public who wishes to address the council on this item, I invite you to the podium.
I'm not addressing the public hearing, but I am letting you know that we have our senior paralegal here who we've been working with on the bonds, in case anyone from the public or you would like to ask questions.
Kate.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion to close by Alderman Model and a second by Alderman Sternig. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our action items tonight. Our first is a final resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for Gen X Holdings LLC project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Jay. Again, Kate is on the line. If you want to hear from her or ask her any questions, you're welcome to. Otherwise, feel free to just adopt it. You've known this is coming for a while.
And Jay, this was an item she had presented probably six months ago now, correct? And kind of a unique, I don't know if unique's the right word, but a different way of financing through these bonds. And so we have heard this, and it's the same.
Unique, sir. We haven't, we don't do this very often within the city of West Bend. It is a financing tool that is helping out Kettle Marine Metal Products, and we're really excited. They're excited. We're anticipating if everything goes well tonight. And you adopt these measures tonight, we're going to close on the property with them and have a land sale tomorrow. They're ready to get going on their new construction.
Thank you for that. Any comments, questions? All entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry. Did we already take a motion on this? Okay, thank you. We already have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a resolution approving the land sale to Gen X Holdings LLC. Again, this is Kettle Marine Metal Products.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll take the motion, Alderman Dolnick, and second, Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions on this? This item came before plan commission at our last meeting, and the project looks very, very nice. And again, we're very excited for this project to get underway. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And congratulations to our friends at Kettle Marine Metal Products, and we look forward to seeing the progress throughout the summer. And I'm going to sign this land sale approval right now so they can get underway first thing in the morning. Great. All right. Our next action item is a resolution reaffirming the city of West Bend's commitment to urging Washington County to implement the results of the 2023 advisory referendum to share 20% of sales tax revenues annually and equitably with municipalities. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Model. Any comments, questions on this one? Alderman Dolnick.
I'm just going to say, this really tells the whole story. And it's, I was happy to see this.
Any more comments? After a successful vote on this tonight, this will be signed and sent to our county board supervisors, again reaffirming our request, and quite frankly, the request of 76% of constituents on sharing sales tax. Any more discussion? Alderman Allen?
Quick question. You're going to send it to all of the supervisors as well as the county executive?
Correct.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a resolution honoring Alderman Jed Dolnick.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig, second by Alderman Sparts. I'm not going to make you stand in the front here, Alderman Dolnick. I got to scroll down here. Whereas Jed Dolnick was elected as District Six Alderman from April 1981 to 1985, and as District Five Alderman from April 1998 to 2002, and April 2020 to 2024, representing constituents in the city of West Bend for 12 years. And whereas during Jed Dolnick's tenure on the common council, he served as the appointed Alderman Representative on the Board of Electrical Examiners, Municipal Development, Redevelopment Authority, Parking Authority, Airport Commission, Plan Commission, Cable TV Committee, Board of Public Works, Chairman of the Finance Committee, and alternate on the Municipal Board of Canvassers, Board of Health, and as a citizen member of the Fire Prevention Board. And whereas Jed Dolnick exemplified outstanding leadership as District Five and District Six Alderman, devoting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Jed Dolnick and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed and approved this 15th day of April 2024. Thank you, Jed. Jed, would you like to say a few words?
Me, me a few words?
You, yeah.
Well, no. It's just, thank you very much. This was very nice. My thanks to all of you and to city staff for all of your help and support. And just a quick observation, in '81, when I was first elected, I was 26 years old. I was three months away from being married. Now, my final retirement, I'm not doing this again. I'm going to be 69 next year, next week, rather, and I have four grandchildren. And it just all went so quickly. So, thank you.
Very cool, just in different parts of your life, you know, that you've dedicated service to your community. Obviously, service as a police officer and service has been a part of your life. And I'm so thankful that you gave so many years of that to the city of West Bend in different phases of your life, which is really outstanding and just sets a neat example of leadership and service.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next is a resolution honoring Justice Model.
Motion to approve.
How about we'll give the motion to Alderman Sternig, Alderman Allen with the second.
I'll second it.
Great. Justice, do you want to stand in front of the podium here?
No.
No, okay. Whereas Justice Model was elected as District Seven Alderman from April 2018 to 2024, faithfully representing his constituents in the city of West Bend for six years. And whereas during Justice Model's tenure on the common council, he served as Chairman of the Finance Committee and on the Board of Public Works, Collective Bargaining Committee, Community TV Committee, Downtown Business Improvement District Board, Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, Parks and Rec Commission, Plan Commission, and the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. And whereas Justice Model exemplified outstanding leadership as District Seven Alderman, devoting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend, especially the former village of Barton area. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Justice Model and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed and approved this 15th day of April 2024. Justice?
I mean, I came in completely unexpected. Like, you've made that point a couple of times, Jay, and I guess I'm going out relatively unexpected as well. I can't say I'm going anywhere. You know, the Barton Business Association still needs leadership for now. We've got a lot going on up there. The city staff, Jess, Jay, everybody else, you guys have been great to work with. I'm really going to miss you. I feel a little bit like I let you down, like I didn't work hard enough for this. And I guess we'll see what this guy does. If nothing else, I'll be back in a couple of years.
Justice, you're just one of those guys that's just so much fun to be around. You never know what, you know, we're waiting for a parade to start, and here comes Justice with his American flag hat on, on his motorcycle. And you just, you care so much about the city, but especially, as it said in that resolution, especially for your area.
I do.
In the Barton area and the businesses. And we're proud of you for purchasing another building up there in Barton last year, and we know you're not going anywhere. A legacy I think you really leave behind is the Barton Garden up there, right off of the trail, which is something you spearheaded and worked so hard at. And thank you for that and for six great years of service.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Before we move on, I want to jump ahead to our reports. Do you mind, Alderman Allen, bid board meeting report from April 2nd?
We had an interesting bid board meeting. We approved the non-revised budget as a result of an earlier discussion on a of an earlier discussion on a plan to water the downtown, which is going, has moved to action next month. We did have a lengthy discussion with Scott from Scott's Landscaping. And he laid out what they will be doing. So we will be readdressing that at the next meeting.
Okay.
But it was, it was an interesting meeting and look forward to rerun first Tuesday of May.
Thank you. Plan Commission from April 2nd?
Right, right. Planning Commission from April 2nd. Okay. Conditionally use permits. We have a public hearing for the restaurants that a lot of us are familiar with, Eaton's Fresh Pizza, they're moving. Approved. Public hearing for the Taqueria Axada?
I don't know how to say it either.
We're having a problem with that one. It's in Marnard's Park.
It's probably a Sada.
Basically, got to find that. Thank you. What Mark said. And then, like, we just discussed Kettle Marine Metal Products under the site plans. They're coming in with a slightly smaller building, but they're at least getting that off the ground. And then discussion and recommendation, this one, I don't really remember this one, Jed. Can you talk about that a little bit more detail?
This was Main Street and Progress, I'm sorry. Main Street and Progress Drive. We had to change the comprehensive land use plan, and then we set a public hearing. Oh, those are two separate things. The other one was Fifth Avenue. We, we're going to a public hearing to change the recommended land use from commercial to family residential and multifamily, to a combination of things to better suit how, over the years, that area has developed.
Oh, yeah.
Basically, it's, yeah, Progress and Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Awesome.
And then the other one was South Fifth Avenue. That's for the old courthouse.
Okay.
To go from institutional to commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We were concerned about the rock and roll bands causing trouble in the neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. The use won't change, but because over the years, it has gone from county ownership to, they spun it off to nonprofit organizations. So they want to change it from institutional to commercial. It's a technical change that has to be done.
Not likely to do that.
So you'll be, you'll be getting those at council in the near future.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Jed. I just...
Thank you. We do have two items appropriate for closed session tonight, and it's good practice to read the motions on these. So I'm going to read both of them. This is to entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851G, which is conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, specifically landfill litigation and raise order at 133 Oak. The other one is entertaining a motion into executive session, State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, specifically a potential offer to purchase a portion of tax parcel 111-910-30006.
Motion to proceed to closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. And I need to call role on this one, Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Zingsheim.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Great. We are in closed session. We do anticipate returning with potential action on this tonight. So we do anticipate returning back into open session. Thanks.
Thanks for taking us through those.
Yeah, it was pretty long.
No, it was pretty.
I try not to be.
It's always interesting stuff. And...
No.
Who's that?
No, not if he knows the people.
Did he use...
I actually haven't seen him. He was talking about this guy that you were sitting next to.
Oh, he used to, that's right, yeah. Okay, I remember you telling me that last week, yeah. Okay, we have now reconvened back into open session. And I will entertain a motion on our closed session item.
Motion to approve the land sale contract.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Model. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Just a reminder that we do have another meeting tomorrow night. Our organizational meeting starts at six o'clock right here in Council Chambers. Would ask that you maybe wear a sport coat or a tie or whatever. You know, everybody always looks nice, but we are going to take some pictures tomorrow night. So be here a little bit before six o'clock, I believe, to take some pictures. Any other announcements? Go ahead. I'm sorry?
Please send out an email that ends with five, between five and 5:45.
Be here between five and 5:45 to have your picture taken.
5:45.
Okay. Any other announcements? Alderman Allen.
Golf season is here. The courses are actually open.
Yeah?
I was going to say, there was a number of events downtown. Wine Walk was in competition with a almost completely sold-out event at the bend. Downtown was hopping Saturday night, big time.
Yeah. Crete? Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Alderman Model. Alderman Dolnick will be seeing you around town for sure. And we are adjourned. Thank you.